It's extending along the front of the house. It's a significantly undersized lot. It's a modest increase in the size of the deck. And again, it's not going into the front yard any further than existing. So I'm okay with this. Mr. Sota is in agreement.
I'm in agreement, sir.
Mr. King is in agreement. You want to come up?
We have notes on the plans here that the rear deck to be removed completely, but we had comments that it would be modified. So that rear deck is to be removed is what we're looking at right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're approving as drawn.
Okay. All right, any more comments? All right, we'll move to a vote. We're going to do this a little differently tonight, given our microphone situation. So please raise your hand if you are with the motion. That's Mr. Wolf, Mr. Sota, Mr. King, Mr. Dubois, and myself. And please raise your hand if you are against the motion. That's no one. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck with your project, sir.
Next up, 164 Rogers Avenue, M B P thirty-five slash four-one-three slash ten, B B. Safe Harbor Point Milford Marina owner. Vary section three point seven point four point two, main building. Easterly side yard setback to thirteen point six five and eighteen point eight five, where thirty feet is required, small shed. Easterly side setback to nineteen, where thirty is required. Three point seven point four point two three, no buffer, where thirty feet required. Three point seven point four point three three, building, height of fifty foot permitted, provided all buildings is setback, the height of the building where the main building is not. Six point three point two, expansion of non-conforming structure, all to construct a new boat storage and maintenance building. Survey by John Paul Garcia Associates, P C, oh-six-oh-three-two thousand twenty-five.
All set? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is John Paul Garcia. I'm a licensed professional.
Sir, if you could please speak more directly into the microphone.
I don't get told I'm quiet very often. For the record, my name is John Paul Garcia. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor, licensed to practice in the state of Connecticut, Principal Office of one-ninety Fairwood Road in the town of Bethany. I'm here representing Safe Harbor Marina, who the owners of property at one-sixty-four Rogers Avenue in the town of Milford. With me tonight also are Josh Hoodwell, their Vice President of Operations, and Grant, and I apologize, Grant Voight, who's their Marina manager. What they're proposing to do is to rip down an existing one-hundred-foot by one-hundred-foot building. A small shed in the back of the existing, in the back of the existing house. And in their place, construct. A new one-hundred.
Yeah, I know it's difficult, but maybe you can move the easel a little closer so that you can sneak into the microphone. Thank you.
A new one-hundred-and-fifty-by-one-hundred-foot building. The purpose of taking the old building down is it's reached its, essentially it's reached the end of its useful life stage, and it's starting to become an issue. The new building will allow for wet floodproofing. It'll allow for a more compliant building, because this isn't a flood zone. And it'll allow for the construction inside of a mezzanine that will allow us to get a lot of stuff up off the ground and off of the flood elevations, and taking them above base flood elevations. So it's a vast improvement. We're pulling the new building farther away from the east side yard. And we're pushing it closer to the existing building, which is one of the reasons for asking for one of those variances. The reason the building has to say essentially where it is, in other words, it's on the back end of the footprint, I don't know if you can see the red here, the back end of this building is basically the back end of the existing building. And the reason it has to be there is because of the lift well. Moving boats in and out of here is constrained by this lift well. Also, the doors are on this side, on the south, on the west side, and access to the, to the doors is very limited, which is why the width is the same as the lift of what's there now, with just a minor modification. I'll have Mr. Twidwell explain the reasoning behind what they're looking for, just to give you a, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, thank you. Again, the main reason behind the building being the size as it is, is the height of the building. This was a formerly a rack storage building, which we're not using anymore. And as John Paul had mentioned, it's, it's outlived its life expectancy, it's, you know, in a little poor condition. So the new building will have a higher elevation, or excuse me, a higher roof height to allow for vessels to come in and out. And we have to fit the, you know, we have a travel lift that brings boats in and out, and it's varying heights depending on what's built for it, but typically a travel lift height's twenty-five feet. And vessels exceed that with some having tuna towers and stuff like that of almost forty-five feet. So being able to bring those large vessels in and out, you know, is necessary to have those big doors. So typically, you see a thirty-by-thirty or a forty-by-forty-foot door, just to be able to move the big equipment in and out. So that's the need for it to be so high.
How high is the current building, the existing building?
It's thirty-six and a half. Thirty-six and a half?
And how high did you say the travel lift is?
Travel lift height is twenty-five feet. Is it twenty or twenty-five right now? Twenty-five feet is the top of the travel lift. So then you have the boats that, you know, as you pick the boats up, the vessel height is kind of restricted, so it's very close right now. We do bring some boats in, but you kind of, you're either up at the top on a piece of equipment, or you're just hoping it's just enough high. But with a, with a, with a high enough building height of fifty feet, you don't sweat as much. Still have to be careful.
And if we moved this building closer to the middle of the property, off the property line, where the, on the side where the doors are, you're saying you're not going to be able to maneuver vehicles in and out, or boats in and out?
Right, because the travel lift has also got about a twenty-foot width span, and we have parking to consider there as well. We don't want to consume too much parking spaces.
And you're also constrained by wetlands.
Correct.
You have wetlands on the side.
We have them off.
So your, 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 your turning radiuses and your movements are constrained by the wetlands and the travel lift and the bulkhead.
So how much usable space is there on the parcel?
Usable space?
Yeah, because I'm looking at your lot size, and it far exceeds the minimum of the zone. And I understand you have a lot of wetlands on the property, but minus wetlands, how much usable space do you have? And considering you do have such a large parcel, could the parking that impedes that turning radius be relocated so that building can come in?
It'd be tough to do, because that, again, the travel lift, you can't make a ninety-degree turn with this equipment, or else you can damage the equipment. So there are, there's a need for a long sloping, slow turn. You know, and again, you've got vessels that are as long as fifty feet in here, so trying to make that, even though the travel lift might be only twenty by twenty, you've got fifty-foot-long vessels, and it just, it's kind of a low, wide turn radius, so.
It's, it's, it's very difficult. You have to understand, do you know what he means by, have you seen a travel lift?
No, no, I understand, yes.
But, well, the problem is, as he said, is they don't turn like a car. They have a very wide, sweeping turning radius. And when you put that on here, that's why the building didn't move this way, because it encroaches on this, and now when you back this up, you have to come back in here, now you have to come all the way out here, and then swing wide of the corner, and then turn slowly and come back in here.
No, I understand. I understand.
It's not uncommon to have to back up, you know, looking, as you approach the building, having to bring it back about, you know, fifty feet, eighty feet back, just to get yourself lined up and, and move the equipment. Because the, the other difficulty is too, is that, you know, ideally, the whole building would be doors, so you wouldn't have to worry about hinking it in. But as it is, you know, getting those angles inside and then having to come back out, it just, it takes a lot of movement to move around the building and stuff.
Sure. We have a request, a variance request here for, I believe it's for that little shed all the way by the docks?
Yeah, there's a shed in the back, right here, that they're going to take down, yeah, we're going to pull that one down and replace it with a newer shed, which is approximately the same place.
Same size?
Same.
Fourteen by twenty, yeah.
Same size. We are going to pull it in, I think the existing one's a little bit over the wetlands, so we're going to pull that in away from the wetlands.
Can that be reoriented and, and put along the setback line so that we can eliminate that variance?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
So that would be small shed, Easterly side yard setback to nineteen feet, where thirty feet required, we can eliminate that request?
Well, can you meet the thirty feet?
Right now, it looks like your setback line is going right through the middle. Can you reorient it the other way and respect the setback?
Yeah, so long as, we can do that? Yeah, it's not, it won't be in the lift well, you'll have to back it up a little bit because of the bulkhead, but yes, that can be done.
Yeah.
Yes, that can be done.
So we can eliminate that request?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Any questions for the applicants?
Good evening, sir, how are you? You talked about a mezzanine in the main building?
Yes.
And what, and the idea there is stuff to store it on the ground floor, you can put up there. And what kind of stuff are you storing there that, on the ground now, that's going to be up there?
Bulkhead, it's going to be, you know, it could be shop tools, mechanic equipment, parts, you know, just could be like oil filters, stuff like that.
So stuff that may be dirty?
You don't want floating around.
Dirty too, that you wouldn't want floating in water or getting into the, into the, into the ocean either?
Right now, the building is a solid wall building, that does not mean any kind of standing, and the intent is to wet floodproof the building. What that means is it has vents in the side that allow the water to come in and out. However, by doing the new building, we have an opportunity to get anything that could be a serious source of pollution up off the ground. And so they're building a mezzanine on this side to allow them to get compressors, mechanical equipment, all that stuff up above the base flood elevations around fifteen.
And that's your intention, is to store anything that could, could pollute the ocean up on the?
Yeah, correct. That's the idea, is you're doing a new building, let's fix the thing.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Do you want to come up? Can you confirm that the proposed building will be further from the property line than the existing building?
Correct. The present building is nine point nine and ten point four feet away from the property line. And the proposed building will be thirteen point six five and eighteen point eight five away from the property line. So we're moving it away by around sixty-eight feet.
Right, it's not eliminating the encroachment, but it is reducing it.
Again, that's why we left it the same width, and we squeezed it as hard as we can. And so we had a chance to move it a little bit. So you can see in red here where the existing building is, and in gray where the new building's going to be pushed over a little bit.
I can bring that up closer if you want to see it. It's hard to see.
We can see it.
We can see it.
Thank you. Yes. Can you go to the other page? That shed there. Right, the front building, another auxiliary building that has an addition in the back that's being removed, and the remaining building is not changing size. And we are moving the main building ever so slightly towards the road as well, from, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a footprint here of the existing, okay, yeah, largely the same. Yeah. Great. Any other, any other questions? Is there anyone speaking in favor of this application? Thank you. Okay, for the record, we do have a letter largely in favor of the application, except for questioning the height of the main building. Okay, anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone opposed? Yes, if you'd like to make public comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record before your comments.
Hello, my name is Brendan Magnan. I live at one-fifty-three Rogers Avenue. I've lived there for over sixteen years, and I've lived in Milford for thirty-five years. And want to thank the board for their service. I too serve on a commission in town. I, for the record, serve on the Wetlands Commission, and I have recused myself from this matter in that capacity, though I was told there was no impacts, but I want to be clear about that. So I have support for their investment and want their, want the community to benefit from this, and appreciate their continued investment in the property. It's actually a really great community of livelihood, people coming and going, recreating, and they have really great employees. The one concern that I think I, I want to put on the record, and I feel like it's going to be a theme from my neighbors, is that we don't feel like we have sufficient information to support all of these variances. In particular, the fifty-foot height is very concerning. As I understand it, the very front buildings are currently thirty-six feet, the peaks are thirty-six feet. The building that's being replaced is less tall than that. So I believe that's a matter of record. So I believe it's slightly shorter. So for us, like, kind of taking all this information, we've just been privy to this in the last seven days, we don't really feel like we've had sufficient involvement, and sort of we're relying on you guys to represent us as citizens, because we trust that you kind of understand the regulations, they're there for a reason. And so we kind of have, at least, I'll speak to myself, I'll be clear, like, we object to the fifty-foot proposed height. There's all kinds of innovation, there's all kinds of ways of engineering buildings, so I commend them for that, but they've got to work harder, in my view, at figuring out how to sort of innovate and be, you know, able to keep up with the times without constructing this football field or football, you know, arena. And I think, again, we're, we're not opposed to the development, it's just that, within reason, it's going to obstruct views, it's going to, like, I myself am just the opposite of the property, so I won't be as impacted as some of my neighbors down left and right of me that won't have views of the harbor any, any for. So I'll keep my comments brief. Thank you again for your service and your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. As a point of clarification, I will say that in this zone where the property is located, they are allowed to build a fifty-foot-tall building with the caveat that that building be fifty feet from the property line. So they're here tonight to ask for an exception to the fifty feet from the property line in order to build fifty feet in height, because they, their claim is that they don't have the width of the property, they can't move it into the center. However, they are, within certain circumstances, allowed to build fifty feet in this zone.
Thank you for that clarification. I understand that is the variance request, it's to, but I believe it's in combination with, as you described, the, the limited, the, the exception to the parcel size or the footprint, I guess. But, yeah, I'm not an expert in this, I'm just a little struck by, like, we're kind of all surprised that this is happening. We don't really sort of feel like we have sufficient information, just sort of being presented sort of in the darkness of night.
Well, that's why we're here tonight, to discuss it. So thank you for coming. Is there anyone else opposed to this matter? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Name's Sean Tizoli, one-eighty-nine Rogers Avenue. My biggest thing is the fifty-foot, and I understand the way you explained it now, but under section sixty-three point two, there's a lot of other regulations that this is non-conforming to. Having a building that's going to be fifty feet high is going to look ridiculous in an area that's been so historical over the years. It's really going to affect the neighborhood, it's going to affect pricing in the neighborhood. And you're going to put a bigger building, you're going to have more boats, you're going to have more cars parking. This parcel isn't big enough really for what they have now. On the weekends, when it gets busy, there's people parking in the streets. On the weekends, when it gets busy, there's people parking in the streets, uh, and it, and almost into the wetlands on the road. I just think, what was there, um, that building was sufficient for how many years? For the, uh, other marinas that were there? And that, that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed?
Bear with me a second, I, like the others who've said, some of us were not fully informed on a knowledgeable basis early on. Uh, I understand that they did make a mailing, I'm at one, let me start again. I'm Kurt Moore, my wife is Denise, we live at one thirty-nine Rogers Avenue, we live across the street from Port Milford. I've been there for fifty-one years, raised my family there, and, uh, when we first bought our home, it was a twenty-three-silt arena, it was then filled in illegally with Manny Russo. They're there now, they're non-conforming in several of the buildings currently, and I think that we're concerned that, number one, I didn't get the mailing, they, I was shown that they did make the mailing, and there was also a sign out in front of Port Milford sign, but that sign, if you look at it today, and I've got pictures and I showed it to Meg, it's not there, and it hasn't been there for three or four days. So I don't think the neighborhood understands what this is all about. It's interesting that it came on a holiday weekend, but that said, I'm gonna assume that you as the board know the rules and regulations and know all the spec, you know, specifics about each of these characteristics in terms of the, uh, like six point three point two. If I, if I read that correctly, that talks about expanding that building, yes, you can go fifty feet, but you're not allowed to expand the footprint. They're going from ten thousand feet to fifteen thousand feet. They're also asking for setbacks, if you look at a hundred and fifty, excuse me, a hundred and fifty by a hundred feet, it's fifteen thousand square feet. The current building is ten thousand square feet, shown on their specifications. So that's gonna have to, and they're also asking for setbacks from thirty feet to thirteen feet and so forth and so on, which you all know. I would ask the board to find out from them, how many slips do they currently have? How many parking spaces do they currently have? How many parking spaces is that calculated with boats stored in the parking lot? And with boats not stored in the parking lot? This building is gonna go another thirty percent. How many boats are they gonna store in that building? Do they have enough slips to manage those boats on the water? I also suggest that... This whole application is an unusual hardship, it's what it should be. But legally based, it's fabricated particularly for this firm that owns them, Blackstone. They bought them for five point six billion, they're a trillion dollar company that owns them, they have facilities in Stratford, Westbrook, and, um, Branford. So why do they need another big one in this small, beautiful, historic harbor of Milford? I also suggest that the Milford Harbor doesn't have the canal or the channel that's wide enough to manage that many more boats, and it's at a point where the Milford Yacht Club is gonna be impacted, along with all the other docks and slippage that is out there. The proposal is also a direct flagrant violation of the city's own Plan Conservation Development, P O C D, which you all know about. My view, um, the variance is, it's their self-deposed hardship. If they went in and bought this property, they knew what their deals were, so fine, keep the building the way it is at thirty-three feet. You want a ten thousand square foot, fine, keep it. They don't need this from a financial standpoint, and it's not gonna benefit anybody in the neighborhood. And if they increase this, the, the Rogers Avenue traffic is already bad enough, and it's basically a dead-end street, 'cause you go down Rogers Avenue, you gotta come around to go back. So we get a lot of high-speed traffic there, which is unfortunate. I sugg- suggest that we have a challenge, both as a board and as a city, to control what the development is for our neighborhood and the business boating areas and so forth. I suspect that they can survive, they survived for years before this, so I would suggest that this should be clearly not approved and not supported by the board. If you have any further questions, I'm here to try to ask or answer any I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, uh, can I ask, you, you mentioned the P O C D, what, how, how do you think it doesn't comply with the P O C D?
Well, if I read the P O C D correctly, it's talking about...
It's fine, I'm just looking for your opinion on it, I wanted to hear your opinion on it.
My opinion?
Yeah, that's, you, you brought it up, so I wanted to hear why.
I don't, I don't think it's, it's managing or working towards what the city of Milford wants to do, to improve space. This property is below sea level, and it's gonna be, uh, on any given flood situation, it's gonna flood. I think one of the gentlemen asked, what's your equipment gonna do, what's gonna happen to the property there? None of this is ten-foot raised above sea level, so you know more about C O P D than I do, right? I probably mispronounced the, the acronym.
Oh, you'd be surprised, you might know more than me.
So, thank you for your time, appreciate the board's influence and input on this, and, uh, we hope we hear positively.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to this application?
Shane Hogan, I live at one sixty-five Rogers. I'm mostly here in support of my neighbors and to just get more information on exactly what's happening. I think more details on the project and what exactly what's happening, uh, uh, and also that, uh, you know, I've just became aware of this after the Fourth of July holiday, so I'm really just gathering information here, but here mostly in support of my neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, Meg, can we confirm that all mailings and all signs posted were in accordance with the regulation?
Stephen, uh, if Stephen has access to the online display, there's pictures of the posted signs, the postmarks were, uh, received correctly and the, the statutory protocols were followed.
Thank you. I appreciate that it might have felt like a surprise coming over the holiday weekend with not a lot of chatter beforehand, but all notices did go out within the required time period.
Sir, uh, one of the, uh, nice folks mentioned, uh, issues with parking with the new building, are you losing parking spots, gaining parking spots, boat slips?
They're gonna probably pick up, again, Josh Wolf, the building's being used for dry storage and maintenance, so the odds are they'll probably pick up a number of spots, because now you're pulling boats that were normally stored outside, inside.
And, I, I don't know if this is...
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is appropriate to respond now or if that happens after, so...
No, go ahead.
But I wanna be clear, this, this isn't affecting wet storage, and you'd have to understand the marina industry for that, but this is only affecting dry storage. This does, this has nothing to do with the amount of slips that are in the water, uh, that's staying the same, this is just for winter storage only. And so the slips amount stay the same, there is no increase in traffic, there is no increase in boats coming here. We want those boats for winter storage that are going to Bridgeport and giving Bridgeport their money, we want those boats to come here, to Milford, where we have, and, and just for the record, we have nine properties in Connecticut, um, all of them, uh, very, you know, well-run, good-looking properties. Milford we acquired just last year, we want to bring it up to that standard. And I think as, as our neighbors have seen, that building is an eyesore, you know, it's not what we want for the neighborhood.
But more importantly, it's substandard, and it is technically at the end of its useful life. A good flood could knock it down. A new building will be flood, wet, what they call wet flood proof, and that is, you put vents in sufficient to, there, there's a formula that's used that's established by FEMA, but it technically allows the water to flow through the building. Also, the mezzanine, right now, stuff is just stored, right now, and the mezzanine will get everything up above base flood, so that improves the situation. The reason we're asking for the fifty feet is not for the height, the height is determined, so eloquently put, is allowed. The reason we're asking for it is, we're going through the grief and aggravation of ripping down the old building, and let's build what will be, A, attractive, because it'll be new siding, and B, will be functional, and will improve the operation.
And, and to, to highlight on just the height situation is, you know, going to a, you know, a thirty-three, the, the smaller that we put that building height, it restricts us with what boats we can handle. And some people don't realize that, you know, a lot of our storage buildings, um, they are more of a flat roof, because as you bring the boats into the corners, if you have a pitched roof, you're, you can't bring the same size boats in the corner, so, you know, it just, it limits what we're able to bring inside and outside. If you start putting smaller boats in, well then that, you know, we're not able to bring the larger boats in here, and it's just, it's worthless.
How tall is the building now?
The building now is thirty-six and a half.
Thirty-six and a half?
Yeah.
All right.
And just...
And it doesn't meet, and, and by the way, the existing building doesn't meet the setbacks.
Right.
And that existing building is empty, there's no revenue flowing through that because we can't use it. That's another reason why it just does not, it, it doesn't work as the way it is, we need, you know...
Mr. Sodi, I had a question.
Okay, so your building roof is, uh, fifty feet, correct?
At the peak, not the ends.
Okay, but your garage door is forty feet, why can't you put a steel beam over the garage door and drop that roof down at least eight feet?
I'm not doing, I'm not doing the design...
Well, then you need to talk to your engineer.
We talk to our engineer, you also have to have pitch in a roof, you can't have a flat pitch, buil- a, a, a...
If I saw on the plan, what's the pitch on the roof?
What's that?
What's the pitch on the roof? It's on your plan, but I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's a, a, a one-on-twelve, which is basically pretty flat.
Yeah, it's pretty much a flat roof.
Yeah, don't forget, it's a hundred-foot wide building.
So you could, you could drop it down at least eight feet over, at least eight feet over the door, and then go up with your one pitch from there.
The reason being is, we do have to block these boats up, which does add another three or four feet to the bottom of it, we can't just...
But if you get them through the door, why do you need any more height than that?
Because if we're, if, if they're blocking them, if you get it through the door with just enough height...
Just chop them down lower.
You, you miss it, you...
It, it doesn't work.
I mean, the bottom of the V is, is gonna be what? What, do you put it on a six-by-six or something, so it's almost gonna be touching the ground anyway?
Larger boats go on an eight-by, uh, some, some of them have to be cradled up higher, they can't go on a six-by-six, 'cause that won't support the weight of the keel.
I, I think you could lower the roof, I mean, the neighbors are, that's the biggest thing the neighbors are against, and I, I don't, uh, I definitely think you can too.
And this is, again, I, this is great dialogue.
Well, that's the other question. You, you know, you, you're, you're, you're starting to get, if you've ever seen them move a boat, they only move the thing about a foot off the ground, two feet...
Talking into the microphone, I can't hear you.
And then when, I'm sorry?
Could you speak into the microphone, I can't hear you?
Oh, sure. I think you have to understand the boat-moving and storage operation. A boat has got a, a six or a seven-foot keel, you know, to the bottom, so if you got a boat with a tuna tower on it, when they move it, they may very well get it through a forty-foot door, because the boat's only a foot or two off the ground in the slings, but now, once you get it inside, you have to lift that boat up and block it. You have a specific way to block it, so if, if you're saying that you only want a forty-foot high building, it doesn't work.
I've lived in Milford all my life, and I've had boats, and I've been around boats, and I've been in boatyards, I've never seen a boat, the, 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 the bottom of the V, up three feet, never.
Again, it's just all, it depends on what work we have to do.
And I go by your marina all the time, and I go by all the other marinas in Milford, so you guys, you know, I'm just giving you suggestions.
And, and, and if you go with a forty-foot height, just to give you a heads up, if you go with a forty-foot high door, you need a couple of feet over the top of the door. Now you also have a one-on-twelve pitch, that's another four and a half to five feet. So if you start with forty feet, you put a beam over the top of that, two feet, that's forty-two feet, and another four feet, you're at forty-six feet, easy. I leave the building design to...
How, how deep, how wide is the buil- how deep is the building? Thirty feet? Fifty feet?
It's a hundred feet wide. The building's a hundred by a hundred and fifty.
Hundred by a hundred and fifty, so one, one inch pitch?
So the ridge, so the ridge is running down fifty feet, so if you got a one-on-twelve, which is about minimum because of snow load, you're at forty-eight, you're, you're at, uh...
What's that?
If, if, if fifty inches right off the back, before you add any roof depth or any beam over the top of it.
Okay, your plan says quarter inch per foot, not one inch per foot.
Yeah, that's, that's...
No, that's quarter inch per foot, I'm a builder, that's a big difference from one inch per foot.
Fifty, fifty, fifty feet is fifty, is, is, you're, you're looking at somewhere on the order of forty-eight inches is the slope on that roof.
So, so if the building's a hundred feet, you're fifty feet, quarter inch per foot, so divide the fifty by four, what are you at, um, what's fifty by four? Twelve and a half, so you're at twelve and a half quarters, right?
It's, it's deeper than that, that, that may be an error.
It's nowhere near four feet though, it's nowhere near four feet.
Quarter inch, quarter inch per foot is, is not, well, the bottom line is, this is what the client needs to make it work.
Okay.
I thought it was deeper than that, it's not quarter inch.
I've got another question about the layout. Behind the building is where you've got the travel lift, you're pulling out of the water into the travel lift. Why are we coming around the cor- if you're rebuilding this building, why are we coming around the corner to the doors, why aren't we making the builder wider, building wider there and just bringing the boats directly in?
There's, there's, uh, two locations with doors, there's a door location here in the front and also on the side, so we have the ability to, to come in and out. But the reason we put it here at the front is because it's a shorter trip with the travel lift inside here to be able to fit it.
Right, so I'm saying, why aren't we making it wider there so that the majority are coming in there? Why are we bringing the boats around to the, to the side? Why can't you bring them, why can't you make the building wider and bring them all in?
There's only...
Directly from the docks?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, there, the, the doors are going on this side, the water side.
I thought you said they were going on that.
There's, there's one door here, which is a, which is basically a paint fabrication booth, so any, that, that requires, um, separation of the rest of the building, so there'd be one small, you know, it's like a, another, another door here to bring in service.
So if we're not turning the boats around the building, then why can't it move closer to the middle of the lot?
Well, I'm sorry, we, we are, 'cause there's, again, there's one door going here, and there's two going at the front, but you still need to make that turn if you're gonna put a boat for service inside there, so that's why.
So my question is, why can't we re-figure the building so they're all coming in from the harbor side? Why do any of them have to make that turn around?
They're all coming from, so you, so you're asking...
From the, from the docks? Why do any of them have to turn around that corner?
'Cause this is just, this is a service bay only, so most of the storage boats, yeah, will be coming in this side. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Yeah, so most of the serv- most of the boats' storage will be coming in through this direction. There's only gonna be one or two boats. At any given service interval, they're gonna be coming around, they're coming into this side, but the bulk will be coming in through here. And there's, yeah, and again, just the, you know, you've got about a, the travel is gonna occupy a good amount of space coming around the building, so...
Okay, so it sounds like, between Bill's comments and my thoughts and what the opposition is saying, I think that there is room for reconfiguration of this project. You can have fifty feet if you are fifty feet from the property line, nobody is disputing that. I think, I think there's room for reconfiguration here. Would you consider keeping this hearing open and coming back next month with some other thoughts?
Yeah, are you, are you, are, are you meeting in August?
Yes.
No, well, a lot, a lot of commissions cut down in August. Sure, why not, we'll keep it open.
Okay.
And sir, uh, the quarter inch pitch times fifty feet will only increase the roof at the peak twelve and a half inches.
I know, but I'm saying is, I think that's...
So if you put a, probably a fourteen-inch beam on that thirty-foot wide door, fourteen-inch beam above it, twelve and a half, you could be, you could be at forty-two feet on the peak and come down at least eight feet.
I'm not the designer...
I, I understand that, but you heard what the neigh- you heard what the neighbor said, and we kinda listen to neighbors, so...
I don't disagree with you, I'm not the designer. We'll leave it open, we'll take it under advisement, and we'll come back next month.
And...
Okay.
It would be, if it'd be open to it, maybe we could invite the neighbors for a town hall.
We appreciate, appreciate the banter. One more, one item, Chris Wolf. With this modification, and you're gonna take a second look at this, the communication with the neighbors is critical.
That's what you just said.
We're gonna do that. And one question on rack storage. Average, how many, how many units currently in rack storage and then how many in the future?
Not rack stor- no, we've done away with racks.
It, it used to be rack storage.
So no more racks, so no rack storage in this building?
It decreases the parking as well, we have less cars, we don't have racks.
So no rack storage? So, no rack storage in the whole facility?
Correct. Because we're only operating maybe five or six. But yeah, as I mentioned, we'll talk to you all. It'd be great to swap information because we can all get together and have a town hall at property.
We'll get the record from the clerk. No, I'll get the record of who was here from the clerk so that we have it.
This is actually broadcast. I can give you the link, and you can... as much as is getting captured, you can replay the whole set of comments.
You can get it on YouTube.
I mean, I have the addresses written down, but I can pull them off the...
Yeah, all the meetings are on YouTube, and then you can also review the minutes when they're posted.
164 Rogers Avenue. I move to extend... Motion to... make a motion to hold over the hearing until August.
Do you need something from us in writing?
We have a second from Bill Sodhi. All in favor? That's unanimous.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll see you again in August.
I'm just wondering where those letters went because we are right down the street. We never got a letter. None of our neighbors got a letter, so it seems like it was very... a very small area that actually got the letters and were formed.
Ma'am, you can visit me at the office tomorrow, and I will show you the USPS-certified forms. They were taken to the post office. If something happened after that, they did their due diligence.
Okay, thank you. I'm just saying, nobody that I know, any of our neighbors got it, and we're right there, so I'm just making that statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I understand that there was a posting or else...
Sir, anything... yeah, we're... sorry, yes, the hearing is closed, so that was a clerical question, but any more discussion is going to have to wait until August because the hearing is closed.
Okay, fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. Okay, great. New business, old business, staff update. We've got North Street and Rogers Avenue at least next month. Anything else? Two more coming next month. Okay. Wonderful. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion from Andy and a second from Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And we have at least four applications right now for next month. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn from Bill.
Second.
Second from Andy. Motion approved. See you all in August.